Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. For those of you who weren't here earlier, from four to six, there was a reception for this new facility that we are all in this evening. So thank you to the taxpayers of this community and to the district administrators and school administrators who showed us all around the new facilities. Thank you very much. So before we begin, I did want to remind everyone the masking policy. Please keep your masks on during the meeting unless you are speaking on a microphone or during the public comment meeting or public comment process. That is the policy. And yes, so with that, we're going to move. I know there's one change to the agenda. We're going to remove the board working agreements and board assignments from the consent agenda, and we're going to move that down to action item C because I'm going to present the same information, but in a different format, just so the board is aware. With that, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda? There are none. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified? And we'll have to be nimble with microphones because folks watching at home aren't able to hear unless we.
We need to approve the agenda as modified.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All right, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved. So with that, we're going to move directly into student representative reports. I know we have two student reps this evening in attendance, one who is unable to attend. So Mahafi, Henry, do you have any reports for the board?
We do. Do you want to start with me? Hi, my name is Henry and I'm a rising senior at Tiger. There isn't a ton happening right now at Tiger due to it being the middle of summer. However, the majority of THS students I've talked to seem to be a mix of relieved and excited to refer them to a form of normalcy. Normally, students seem to dread the fear of like back to school madness, but this year has a much different energy with a seemingly above average amount of students bursting at the seams as they get ready to attend football games, participate in clubs, watch performing arts, and most of all, get the opportunity to socialize again with their friends. The return to school-based extracurriculars has also been a large topic amongst THS students, especially with the extracurricular equity proposal passing. The TTSU has done a great job communicating this success through social media posts. The fall season for sports also starts about a week from now with the first home football game on August 27th against Glencoe. And Tiger High School's ASB and leadership have also started to kick off back to school planning for activities, spirit, decorations, and communication assemblies, and more.
Hi, my name is Mahafi. I'm a rising senior at Twelton High School, and things on the Twelton side are also relatively quiet right now because sports haven't officially started. The fall season starts up in a week on August 16th, and optional practices are currently ongoing with the first football game on August 27th at Beaverton High School. People seem pretty psyched about the lack of pay to play fees. The Tiger Twelton Student Union has been spreading the word about not just having no pay to play, no, not having to pay for sports, but also the new addition of funds to help cover equipment costs that come along with playing a sport. There hasn't been much communication from the district on that subject, so we're trying to get the word out. Overall, students seem pretty excited about the return to the five-day in-person school model, although it will be an adjustment to come back to normal since we're pretty used to school being at 10 AM.
Testing, yeah. Very well said. Thank you both, and exciting that you all are spreading the word on pay to play fees. That was a big, big accomplishment. I think it really matters most if students are able to take advantage of it. So thank you. With that, unless there's any questions for our student representatives, we will head into superintendent and board communication. And with that, I will hand it to Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, since we have an extensive report here in just a moment, it was great to be able to close out our summer school program where we served over 12,000, 1,200 students at K-8 level and 71 students at the high school level who recovered over 61 credits. There was great energy across, and we'll have some of those pictures this evening as part of the review. Additionally, I'm pleased to say that we have made great progress over last year, being able to host all of our sports camps, including camps that were out of district. Families and students were willing to take care of the vaccination where possible as well as comply with the regulations. All are having a great time, and we'll give you a little update about that. We're very excited to be able to say that full year of activities, athletic and other, are on board this year unlike last year. So slowly but surely, we're getting there. And then tomorrow, in this space, will be a three-day retreat with our administrators, our confidential, and our newly added assistant principals at the elementary level. We will all be working towards the goals set forth in the educational equity and racial justice policy as well as the academic goal, which is primary, and that I will share with the board and with this gathering as well this evening. That is our primary focus, is addressing unfinished learning in the core subjects and helping our staff get there. So very exciting, packed and fully packed week and weeks coming ahead. And as a reminder, school starts on September 8.
Thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith. Board members, updates, communication for your colleagues in the committee?
It's good now. So on August, excuse me, now I can't remember the days, July 24th, I had the privilege to go to the OSBA convention on the Equity Conference. I, it was one of those online things, so you never know who's really there. I only saw Directors Urban and Lynn there, but I don't know if the few others were there because they broke us out into rooms. It was really funny, at one point, they put me in a breakout room, and the only other person who showed up was Maureen Wolf. So she and I had a great conversation, but it was an amazing conference. And one of the things I really appreciated about it was Bryant Marx, who I've heard speak on numerous occasions. He's a wonderful speaker on the topic of equity. And he offered up some definitions that I thought were really pragmatic and useful, and I'd like to just give them here because I think they'll help direct our work. So his definition of inclusion is the act of creating an environment in which any group or individual can feel welcomed, respected, supported, valued, to fully participate regardless of their role or rank. And I thought that was just a really nice, simple, but comprehensive definition. The other thing that he defined was critical race theory. And I feel a little awkward doing this in front of Dr. Lynn, but I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway. Bryant Marx's definition of critical race theory, it talks about the role of law in discrimination. And so it's a topic for law school and public policy. It's not what we do in K-12 education, and I just wanted to put that out there as well.
I guess I'll go next. Basically, all I wanted to say was thank you to Dr. Surikey Smith and her staff for providing the agendas tonight in Spanish and for providing a translator so that they can have access, so that they can create access to our Latinx population. And quiero invitar a todos los, las personas que nos están viendo que hablan español para que vengan, que asistan a este, a esta junta, esta reunión porque es muy importante escuchar su voz de ustedes también. Gracias.
Take the mask off and the glasses come off as well. But I wanted to thank Director Sershmi for mentioning Dr. Marx's presentation. I had the privilege of engaging in my own presentation around really clarifying what critical race theory is and is not. And I think the point that Director Sershmi made was correct, that this is theory that comes out of the law, and you don't really study it unless you are in law school or in a graduate school of education. So it is not K-12 curriculum. And, but, you know, I think that, you know, one of the things that people in the field of critical race theory are now, you know, beginning to look at is that possibility. What would it look like to have this in K-12 curriculum, curriculum context? But those conversations are just beginning. So, but if you, certainly I'd be willing to share the link to the presentation with Patty, and perhaps it could be included at some point for people who are really interested in getting more information about what critical race theory is and is not, and so on. So thanks.
All right, thank you, board members. With that, we're going to move into the next item, reports and discussion. The first and only item under reports and discussion is Tiger Twelton School District Plan for Return to In-Person Instruction. I know Dr. Ricky Smith will be leading the presentation, but I believe she also has some of her colleagues assisting. So with that, Dr. Ricky Smith.
Testing? Yes? Okay, good. Thank you so much. Patty, if you please pull up the slide. Chair Bowman, Vice Chair Lynn, Directors, and assembled audience. This evening, it is our pleasure to report to you, share with you the updates relative to the recent masking order issued by the governor on July 29th. And so let's see, Patty, if you would please advance to the next slide. So first, I want to anchor us in our purpose, which is basically we are returning to full in-person instruction. And we look forward to welcoming our students back on September 8th, which for those who are choosing in-person instruction. We are also launching, as you well know, the TTSD Virtual Academy K-12 for those families who are not yet ready to come in person or find the current conditions for entry into in-person instruction not suitable for their student, and so offer the Virtual Academy online, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Next slide, please. The key concepts this evening that we will be covering is relative to the state order, to the COVID-19 Delta variant data that led to this order, the state's authority in issuing this order, and TTSD's advocacy work related to this order. In addition, we'll cover the options for instruction, and we will talk about athletics and extracurricular activities and provide an update as to what flexibilities we have there. And then the instructional focus for the 21, 22 school year. Next slide, please, Patty. Key concepts, these are the things that we believe as we set forth this plan and take a look at the order. First, we believe that in-person instruction is the most effective model to support students' social, emotional health development and academic success. And I said the same thing last year when we were talking about our plan to return to hybrid instruction. The second is that we believe that it is our requirement to set conditions, physical conditions, emotional conditions, such that the student can engage in full day, full five-day-a-week instruction without interruption due to exposure or because of illness. The third is that we believe that parents have the right to determine what the best educational placement for their child is. And so for that reason, we want to make sure that we are providing additional options to in-person instruction, which if you look nationally is not always the case. And last, of course, we always use our lenses of equity, which your tents are at the DAS, our staff and student safety requirements, and our community public health lenses as we implement that plan. Next slide, please, Patty. So here's sort of the brief timeline that got us to where we are today. On June 2021, ODE Director Gil announced a shift to local decision-making with the caveat that the locus of decision-making is dependent on the current COVID conditions. We believe in the state of Oregon that districts still have complete and total local control, and that is not the case in 1990 with Measure Five, when funding shifted to the state to fund public education. While certain things are in the district's control, other things are in the state's control, and so it shifted that dynamic. In July 1 through the 22nd, we welcomed 1,200 K-8 students who engaged in summer school and the academic enrichment programming. And here you have a few pictures from that. You will notice that all the students are masked, but all of them were engaged. There was marimbas, and there was choir, and there was ukulele playing, and there was writers workshop, and science, and Lego robotics, a wide breadth of activities that in walking through those classrooms on a regular basis, saw students highly engaged and enjoying the opportunity to be with their classmates and engaging in activities, and our classrooms were full. As you well know, we started out, we hoped that we would have maybe 500 students. We pushed the envelope to 1,200, and our teachers mightily stepped up and filled those positions. And so we are grateful for that. In addition, we began the revision of the district's health and safety plan with the release of the Ready Schools Safe Learners Resiliency Guide that was dropped on July 22nd, and at which point districts still had the ability to make decisions relative to conditions for coming back into in-person instruction. Next slide, please, Patty. On July 29th, under the State of Emergency Executive Order 2015, the governor ordered OHA, Oregon Health Authority, to develop mask rule for K-12 schools. This includes not just public instruction, it includes private, private parochial and charter that deliver in-person instruction as well as all state agencies. On August 2nd, COSA, which is the Coalition, thank you, it's changed, Coalition of Oregon School Administrators, Oregon Department of Ed, and Oregon Health Authority convened state superintendents to review the Oregon Health Authority Rule 333-019-1015 for implementation of the mask guidance under OHA's authority under Oregon Registered Regulated Statute 431A. On August 12th, which will be this week, this rule goes into effect. Next slide, please. So the question is why? Why now? And I want to spend just a little bit of time here giving some perspective. When I think about where we were a year ago, where we had much lower case counts, and we all believed that we had to stay online, that's exactly what we did, and we stayed there for a very long time. And we've made great progress in the sense that we believe even under current conditions that we have strategies that we can put into place that will help us mitigate the spread of this disease so that we can keep children in seat all day, every day throughout the school year, which is our goal. As well as our athletics, being able to offer a full athletic sports season as well as all of the OSAA activities is a huge step forward. So we are making progress. It just feels as though we've taken a step back here, which is understandable. So Oregon has seen a steep increase in COVID infections and hospitalizations driven by the Delta variant. It now makes up, this variant, 80% of all positive cases, and this includes vaccination breakthrough infections, which were anticipated, event that this would eventually happen, as no vaccine on the market totally keeps a given disease from occurring in an individual. The Delta variant is highly transmissible. It transmits at a rate of one person to eight versus in the fall with the Alpha variant, which was one person to three. The Delta transmission is similar to measles and chickenpox, which we will exclude students from our presence if they are not vaccinated. Unchecked, this variant has demonstrated the capacity to close an entire school in a short period of time. Over the weekend, I was visiting family in Yuma, Arizona, who had started school just that week, and two of their elementaries were completely shut down because they have a wide-open mandate that precludes masking for students. And so one student spread to the next, and then the entire school was impacted. And so they will be out of school probably for the next 14 days while they readjust how to bring kids back into school. Based on statewide positive case rates, 35 of 36 counties have been designated as substantial or highly transmissibility by the Oregon Health Authority, which include Washington and Clackamas Counties. This is important because that's where the Oregon Health Authority gets its authority under 431A. We did address a concern of a patron that said that ORS 401.165 Section 5, which provides for local control under declaration of a statewide emergency, whether that applied to us here in Washington and Clackamas Counties. Per legal counsel, that potentially only applies to counties that have not been designated as substantial or high transmissibility. Washington and Clackamas are two that have been, and so they do not apply to that rule. I believe it is Lake County, which is the next county over to the east of Kalama Falls. That is the one district that may be the 36th. Next slide, please. Here we are. Did I, I got ahead of you. I apologize. One more. Okay. So members of this board have seen this graph before. This is modeling done by Oregon Health Sciences University Statistical Modelers that takes a look both at individual behaviors of a community as well as transmissibility. And I will say eerily enough, this individual has been spot on every time in terms of the height and amplitude of surges as well as the timeline for them receding. So again, at the very front end, you see where we were in September and October. You see the massive surge where we were having case counts in Washington County alone of over 1,600 cases per day in November, December, and January. Then you see the next spike that happened this spring when we came in under hybrid instruction. And now you can see what is being modeled relative to this particular surge. You can see that it is modeled to have an amplitude more on the order of the winter surge. Next slide, please. And indeed, here are the actual numbers, and you can see that that's tracking right along with what OHSU has modeled. Next slide, please. Here is also just a map of the state of Oregon. The deep red are, means that in those counties currently, they are experiencing, they have experienced 1,000 cases per 100,000 or per 10,000. You can see where Washington and Clackamas County stand. For us, from July 4th through August 1, Clackamas County has reported having 126 cases for the week in July 4th, and is now at 546 for the week of August 1st. Washington County on July 4th had 91 for the week. They are now standing, we now stand at 508. So the pattern is very clearly on track to model the November, December surge as predicted. Next slide, please. Okay. So in Oregon, students are required by law to attend school. Therefore, we must place them in congregate settings, in classroom settings where they're with other children, because that's the opportunity to develop relationships and to learn from one another is what we prize. Unfortunately, those are also ideal conditions for COVID-19 precautions are not taken. And currently, majority of our school population is not yet vaccinated. We know that children 12 and up are eligible for vaccination, and we have seen our high school students, many of them take advantage of that. Unfortunately, we are not able to vaccinate yet children zero to age 12, but there is a great push on behalf of the vaccine developers to develop one that is appropriate for the pediatric population. We know that face coverings in conjunction with, not as a standalone method, and I want to be clear about that, because I know many people have said, well, you know, masks alone, they are correct. Masks alone are not as effective as they are when they are in conjunction with. And the reason for that is that number one, you don't spread the droplet to me, and I don't spread droplets to you. And this is true whether it's flu, whether it's measles, whether it's chickenpox. We have seen our European and Asian global partners use masking for many, many years as a mitigation strategy within their own populations. We know that in the healthcare, and as a former trauma, critical care, and public health nurse, I would never think of giving patient care without a mask on my face, depending on what I was dealing with in the given situation. And having navigated a measles outbreak, a tuberculosis outbreak, and an AIDS outbreak as part of my public health experience, I also know that to be true. So, and these are, again, you see the citations there, Ready Schools, Safe Learners, Flexibility, Resiliency Framework, August 3rd, page 13 reaffirms that, as does the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Oregon Health Authority, and Washington County Public Health. Next slide, please. I throw this one in just simply because I think it explains this concept of it takes a variety of strategies. a variety of strategies to make the public health setting or a congregate setting safe. And so if you notice on the very backside, you see what are the little COVID viral molecules. You notice that they look for any place where they can break through, that's what viruses do. And so this idea of a slice of Swiss cheese is used in this model. But you notice that each one of these items has, you know, one more impact in terms of putting one more layer between the individual and a virus getting through. So we have physical distancing and staying home if sick. Masks are a part of that, as is hygiene and cough etiquette. If crowded, that you limit your time in crowds, that you avoid touching your face, that you make sure that if you feel you've been exposed, you immediately get tested. That ventilation and outdoor air filtration is key. Quarantine and isolation is also key. And obviously, the gold standard at the end of that line is vaccination. But again, it is all of these things together that has demonstrated the ability to come into congregate settings and limit numbers of individuals who contract the disease and become ill. Next slide, please Patty. And this is from page 13 of the RSSL Guide, August 3rd, which again reaffirms, these are all of the things that we need to use to mitigate and to maintain safety in our classrooms. Next slide, please. One of the big changes, and again, based on science and based on data review, and this was first announced when I was back in Washington DC at a national superintendent's conference, where I and one other superintendent from the state of Oregon represent them on the governing board. This was a hot topic, if you will. And we had the pleasure of sitting with a number of pediatric epidemiologists who affirmed this stance, which is if all students are at least three feet apart and each one masked and one of the students has, comes down with COVID, those students do not need to quarantine. Where last year, the guidance was, we believe the best way to do that is that if anybody's exposed, regardless, the entire cohort needs to quarantine. So this is a huge step forward in keeping students in their place. Now, that is not true if you are sitting without a mask and sitting next to two other people who are not masked and you are within three feet or less and one of you was positive, then if it were a classroom situation, we would have to quarantine all three of you. Okay? Next slide, please. So the rule then again applies to public, private, private parochial, and charter schools that all offer in-person instruction. Statewide mask requirement says that schools must ensure that all students, including but not limited to staff and students, contractors and visitors must wear a mask during the regular school hours and whenever they are engaged in educational activities, including field trips or off-campus educational activities, not after-school activities in the sense of athletics or OSAA extracurricular activities. A face shield may be worn instead of a mask if the individual cannot wear a mask for medical reasons, and that needs to be certified by the physician or healthcare provider. Nothing in this rule, however, is intended to prohibit a school from complying with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Rehabilitation Act, or the IPA. And Director Kinch, our Student Services Director, can speak to that more broadly. Next slide, please. The flexibility that has been given is that a student or an individual is not required to wear a mask when actively eating or drinking, sleeping, playing in a musical instrument that requires use of the mouth. So any type of musical instrument now may be used without the mask. That this is also a step forward. Engaged in a sport during physical education such as swimming, water sports, or sport where wearing a mask could be a strangulation hazard such as gymnastics or wrestling. Alone in a private office enclosed by walls on all sides with a door that is closed or is under the age of two. Next slide, please. Now, I don't wish to dwell here for very long because I'm not about penalties, nor do I realize that she was aboard had been about penalties, but it is something that we need to put into this space. We are about being proactive and welcoming and warm and bringing all into our community. That said, there are penalties that will be assessed in a variety of ways that this rule is not followed by districts or by any of the individual bodies that I mentioned here to fore. The first is a civil penalty of $500 per day per violation. And we expect clarification of what that, what violate, not the violation, but what the incident means. So is that, you know, a student or a staff member who repeatedly comes in and refuses to wear a mask, is that how it is assessed? And so I will provide you an update once we have that information. And OHA does have this authority under 431A.1010 for additional action as well. And our attorney made it clear to me that during the incident relative to the Rajneesh community in eastern Oregon, where a district failed to comply with orders from the state relative to that action, that OHA, it was an OHA, it was another state body, had the right to withhold state funding from them. And so she believes, and rightly so, that Oregon Health Authority also could level that against a district. Also licensed educators, I think, superintendents, administrators, and teachers. Anyone who is licensed and who fails to obey the laws of the state of Oregon, which are clearly called upon in your license, will face sanction up to and including loss of license for failure to comply. Next slide, please. PACE, who is our insurer through Oregon School Boards Association, provided guidance regarding both House Bill 4402, which was a limited liability against COVID liability, and OAR PACE clearly has stated they will not indemnify a board or district who willfully disregard this order. What that means is then, if a board willfully disregards this order, that the boards are assuming liability both as individuals as well as a collective in the event of staff, student, community member injury and/or death due to COVID exposure as a result of district operations.
Could you go into a little more detail about what personally liable for a board member in that situation?
Yes. It would mean typically, when we have, and this is not news to any school district. There are many reasons why the district may receive a suit on behalf of a student or student and family. And so because of, because it falls under those actions which PACE would indemnify, meaning it would cover that, it would cover that loss, that means that individually, you would not be sued. And collectively, as a board, you could not be sued in addition to them suing the district. So in this case, because it is outside of House Bill 4402, and it is, if the action were to willfully go against that order, PACE has made it very clear, you are on your own in so many ways. So that if a student, God forbid, or a staff member should die as a result of that, and it was because we had willfully disregarded that behavior, then the family of that individual could come and sue each one of you individually, as well as also sue you collectively. So it would be a one-two punch, if you will. We know that there are a group of litigation attorneys who are waiting for this opportunity. And that was one of the premises of moving, giving the legislature to provide some level of coverage with 4402, but it is not ubiquitous and it is not for this instance either. Okay? Did that answer your question, Director? Mm-hmm. All right. Now let's talk about what we want to do. Okay? Here's what we want to do. We want to implement a full instructional day. We will be asking that students who engage in that come into our building, prepare to learn with masks. And if they don't have them, we are more than ready. Oh, sorry. Next slide. Thank you. One more time. There we go. And so as we did last year, we have plenty of masks, we have plenty of hand sanitizer. And both Director Bernard and Director Kinch will share that. We know that for little ones, they like to lick the inside of their masks. So we are prepared to give them as many masks as they need during the day. And in addition to that, I think what's really important also is frequent breaks. You know, I know all of us, you'll find it's cumbersome some days and just need to walk outside, take it off for a little bit. Our children are no different. And so Dr. McCall, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, who also oversees our elementary schools, they have worked out a schedule that provides for frequent longer period recesses so children can get out and breathe fresh air, fire season blows off, and enjoy some mask-free free time. We think that that's very important and will help children get the wiggles out as well and reset for learning. So it may impact our 90-minute reading block, but it is for a good reason. This is also true for middle and secondary students. While they have longer blocks of instruction, teachers will be working on providing frequent breaks so that students have that opportunity to do that and to get into that routine. Presidential regulation, masks are required on all district transportation. Yes?
So when a student goes outside for recess, they will not have to wear a mask?
No. All out, correct. All outdoor, all outdoor activities do not require masks at this time.
Will they be required to stay three feet apart during recess?
We are going to continue to encourage them to keep at least that three foot minimum. But what we know about outdoor activity, Director Surge need, is the fact that there's enough air circulation in science, again, the data has proven that, that there's enough air circulation that the virus has a much more difficult time getting across to someone even to three feet than it would in a congregate setting when I'm sitting in proximity.
Want to follow up to that?
Yes.
Right. The breaks, the mask breaks, those will be outdoors as well?
Correct.
Okay. So you just have a cycle essentially of classrooms will take their breaks outdoors?
They will take their breaks outdoors so that they have that opportunity. And most, you know, many of our schools have covered. So if we are blessed with rain yet this year, you know, students can be outdoors and yet, you know, stay dry and yet have that opportunity to take their mask off. Yeah. And this will just be a routine that teachers, like any classroom routine that teachers would teach. And certainly, again, any family that feels that their child needs a little additional assistance or help with that, that's what the principal and the counselor, the teacher are available for to work, you know, individually with those families and address those concerns.
And then just to clarify, are shields okay? And they are sort of covered in terms of the safety plans, the face shields, or is it masks?
I'm going to let Director Kinch answer that question because she has done a great deal of work with the public health team on that. And I think there are very clearly some very specific situations where that is the best option for students, you know, but the rule is written
For masks.
For masks, for facial covering in that manner.
Perfect. Thank you.
You bet. The other thing here is the parents should watch for more details. This year, last year, we could not have any volunteers in our building. This year, we are welcoming those volunteers in as long as they mask and they sign in and we know that they've been there. So in the event that there may have been an exposure or a question, we can notify them just to alert them to that back. Yes, Dr. Lynn?
Dr. Sue, I did want to ask, with regard to the recess, are kids going to be staggered as they go outside so that the groupings are smaller in number?
Right. We're not going to have the feeding of the 5,000 out on the playground. But that's again, what our hybrid did for us last spring, Dr. Lynn, was the fact that it provided us an opportunity to try to develop those routines and strategies. So we knew how to stack kiddos and we knew how to stack classrooms so that, and we realized that we'll have more children in the fall, but it provided us an opportunity to kind of work out some of those kinks around that. Students also learned how to be very respectful within the bathroom procedures. And so there was a whole procedure around that to limit the number of students, you know, in a given space at a particular time. So I would expect that they will build off of those strategies as well. You learned a great deal last year and it was very, very helpful to us. Thank you for that question. So signup sheets will be continued to be required for volunteers and visitors, again, just so we can notify if necessary. Initial considerations for parents as students are coming back into building. Again, as with the hybrid, we would ask students not to be sent to school if showing any symptoms. That's headache, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, low-grade fever, or anything else that you just can't describe. The too bad part is that we conditioned ourselves, you know, that little bit of sniffles is not a big deal. Well, unfortunately, a little bit of sniffles now may very well be COVID. And I will share with you that currently, in the last week, over 71,000 cases nationally were related to children under the age of 12. So plus what I shared with you relative to schools impacted by the COVID outbreak as well. Students and staff will need to adhere to daily use of masks, maintain social distance of at least three feet, and engage in frequent hand washing and/or use of hand sanitizer. The good news, as I shared before with you, is that students wearing masks and maintaining three feet of social distancing when indoors do not need to quarantine in the event of exposure. And this is coming from the CDC and Oregon Health Authority. Next slide, please Patty. Yes, ma'am. Now, relative to athletics, good news there is that the Oregon Health Authority, the Oregon Department of Education, and the Oregon Schools Athletic Association have affirmed that districts can have local control relative to making decisions for extracurricular and non-instructional activities. That includes all of OSA athletics as well as activities, think like cheer squad. Okay? So TTSD Athletic Leadership Team, I convened them last week when we got this order and asked them to start to think through how we might do this. Director Bernard was also part of that team. We are looking that the guidance would be such that when, as the athletes are competing either outdoors or indoors, that they would not be required to wear a mask. We are now also developing guidance for indoor spectators because our goal here is to keep our student athletes healthy so that they can have a full year of competition, which they so richly deserve. So we are asking for everyone's help to help get our students there. Next slide, please. Relative to TTSD advocacy in terms of flexibility over time, one of the things that the Oregon Health Authority has promised to do is to review the data on a monthly basis and where the flexibility can be given, they will give it. Tomorrow, I have the privilege of being one of a very small select group of superintendents who will be meeting with the governor on that very issue. And we will be advocating for a sliding scale, much like we had last year, which helped guide us whether we needed to stay fully online or online and hybrid or full in-person relative to masking, so that we can provide that type of flexibility over time. We know that this is just the course of what a virus does. It surges and it fades. It surges and it fades until finally, the entire population is either vaccinated or has built natural immunity to the disease. The reason we are having trouble with these variants is because we do not yet have enough people vaccinated and the virus has free rein. We know that there are already two more variants behind this one called Iota and the other Lambda, but we will see how they play out relative to following Delta. Next slide, please. So instructional options for Tiger Twolletin for the 21-22 school year in person. And here are the things that families will experience within person. Full access to rigorous academic instruction in math, language arts, science, social studies, electives such as music, PE and art. Full access to specialized services, special education, English language development, counseling and family support services, just to name a few. Five days a week, full day instruction, transportation and meal service, and childcare partnerships that which have been expanded and will be available for those who wish to access them. Then also the virtual academy, we have developed that to mirror a brick and mortar school. So again, full access to rigorous academic instruction, full access to specialized services, meal support through regional district, food delivery sites. We will continue, we have the flexibility from USDA, and that was affirmed during my visit to Washington DC, that that flexibility will continue. And so we will be able to continue the grab and goes. Five-day, full-day, five-day a week schedule aligned to brick and mortar schedules so that students, when they choose to roll back into brick and mortar, are aligned and pretty much on track at that given level with the instruction. We are also offering one semester enrollment options so that if a parent wants to enroll their child for one semester, vaccines then become available, they can vaccinate them, or they just decide they're ready to come back in, they have that option to do so with minimal breakage in terms of their instruction. And again, the childcare partnerships are also available.
Dr. Sue?
Yes.
Question on that one. First, thank you for instituting that flexibility. I know that was a request of parents. My question is on the staffing side of things, if there is a sort of influx of parents, because we, how many students do we have enrolled right now?
We have 113.
So if there is, let's say, you know, 40 or 50 students who want to go out of the online academy, back to in-person, will the teachers who have been assigned to the virtual academy be reassigned to brick and mortar?
Potentially. It depends on how that 40 breaks. And so if that 40 breaks, you know, across the whole K-12, that's a different situation than if it breaks at one grade level. Additionally, we are, that is how we're leveraging the ESAR dollars to ensure Um, additionally, uh, we are, that is how we're leveraging the ESAR dollars uh to ensure that we have, you know, staffing so that, you know, if there's an influx out back to brick and mortar and there are a few that we still have stability of instruction for those students who remain in on the online school. And we will use the ESAR dollars to do that. Director, search me.
Yeah, so one of the one of the points of advocacy that I would 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 hope that we would do is as more of our high school students become vaccinated, if we reach a a point in our high school of, say, seventy five, seventy or seventy five or eighty, whatever is a reasonable point of our students are vaccinated, that um that we could then say, okay, in high schools, people don't have to be masked because we've reached the vaccination threshold, is that one of the options?
Yeah, I think that's one of the options we're looking at. The challenge with the Delta, and I'm really glad you brought this up, the challenge with the Delta variant is this. Uh, we are seeing a higher degree of breakthrough infection. And the reason is is that it is able on that one to eight transmission, it is because it is able to um you impart a very high load of the virus very quickly. Um, and even vaccinated individuals, if they're exposed to that over and over and over again um in it in any period of time, eventually a breakthrough occurs because the body is basically worn out its ability to put up a total defense. Now, the good news about vaccination, that the importance of that, while it's great if you never get the disease, the real issue is not to be hospitalized and certainly not to face the potential of death. Which is, um, even with the Delta, the hospitalizations continue to spike, but the mortality rate is lower this time, um, particularly for those individuals. And individuals who have been vaccinated with breakthrough, there is not yet um a large enough body that's saying that they had to be hospitalized and and no one has died um that what had is vaccinated. All deaths have been attributed to those not vaccinated. So that's the question is how does the particular variant play? If it's able to load you up pretty quickly, we'll probably have to stick with masks um for a period of time um until that, you know, that, and that's the problem with Delta. Now, we'll see what I O D and Lambda will be, and maybe entirely different. And then give us a little more flexibility if everybody's vaccinated. Yeah.
So fa- follow up on that question?
Yes.
Um. So one thing we've learned from the virus is we have to plan ahead.
Um, yes.
So at some point, the governor will restore local control on this item and it will, I assume, be based on local public health metrics, um, our relationship with Washington County Public Health.
Correct.
How are we going to evaluate our recommended stands regarding masking and other uh mitigation efforts?
Much as we were when we, as we were coming in, which first was what state recommend? Because it was advisory guidance at that point in time. Who else recommends that besides the state? So we look for other al- alternative bodies as well that are um are are bodies that have, you know, deep pockets in terms of of the science, in terms of epidemiologists and work. So things like John Hopkins and CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. And uh, interestingly enough, there is a cadre of physicians, four hundred and thirty in the TriMet area that also signed on to a letter um across, and it's fascinating because it is across um medical professions, medical specializations. So you have um ophthalmologists, internists, dermatologists, family practice, um cardiologists, you know, the gamut, not just pediatricians who have signed on to this letter saying that masking is um is the preferred method in 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 conjunction with other pieces because of the fact that you don't have droplet spread. So it would be bodies like that. Now, I think what we would also do, as always, is that if we have that, is to understand from families as well. What are some of the things that we can do better to help us as a community mitigate the spread? The first line of defense is not sending your child to school sick. You know, in addition to being thoughtful about where you go and with whom you stand and and knowing their history. Um, all of those things can help us mitigate this upfront. And that's true not just for COVID, that's true for any of these. Um, so I think that there is, you know, we look at, always look at the science, anchor there. We look at what the guidance says, is it anchored in the science? We look to what our community um is saying and what their needs are. It's all of that 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 come into play as we consider. And and that was the process that we were working on before this rule came into order. Answered, okay. Thank you for the question. Okay, next slide, please. So what are we gonna do this year? We're going to address unfinished learnings, what we're gonna do this year. And you can hear the excitement in my voice, there's nothing better than 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 getting ready for the first uh first week of school. So this year, the goal is to close the Math and Language Arts Academy academic proficiency gap um as based on district and state assessments, smart or balanced, uh by five percent for all students, which for our current enrolled population would be approximately five hundred and sixty five students, if not more. Um, and at least eight percent for our historically underserved, because we know the impacts. Um, and again, nothing but kudos for Pack With Pride and for the way in which they wrapped uh services around our families who are most in need. This means that we need to be able to assess and address student unfinished academic core content learning and that will be our focus in twenty twenty one in uh twenty, from twenty twenty one in twenty one twenty two. And that will be the focus of tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday's work with administrators. How that is going to happen, how we are going to support our teachers in making sure we understand every child by academic name um and need um and that we are addressing uh and focused solely to academics. Um, this requires that students are able to attend in person and or online, if they choose that option, for a full instructional day, five days per week. So their health and safety is key in helping us do that. Next slide, please. I'm now going to turn this over uh to Directors Kinch and Director Bernard uh to walk you through the elements of the uh operational blueprint that we must submit to the state on the twenty third of August. It does not require board approval, um, but we bring it to you as an information note as well as to our community. Director Kinch.
Good evening. Um, we are going, Director Bernard and I are gonna discuss with you and share with you a little bit about the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan that we will try to figure out, say, in a shorter way. Um, the safe return to in-person instruction plan. It is an operational plan, it's not, it replaces the blueprint. And if any of you had a chance to look at the blueprints from last year, it was probably twenty pages and it had about a hundred different things that school districts were required to do to prepare for um in-person instruction. This one is much shorter, um, and it replaces and it meets the federal and state requirements that we are getting from ESAR and from the state. And it is now due August twenty seventh, they gave us an extension. Next slide. So this is the sections of the plan. So unlike that hundred of hundred list of hundred things, we have uh five. And each one of these has several different components on it under it. You will all have the access to the plan as will the public. Um, we are, all these things, we have things in place for, but we are updating them currently with our different groups of people, teams, stakeholders. Um, I'm gonna touch lightly on a couple of them and then go more into detail on a couple of them. But planning for mental health, we have been working on mental health for years. Uh, we have a really strong positive behavior intervention sys- support system in place, PBYS, you may know it as. Um, we have SEL and teachers have been used to creating community and building relationships with their students forever. Um, that will continue um with the understanding that students haven't been out of school for a year, a year and a half, depending on if they participated in hybrid. Communicable disease plan, that is also something that we have had in the district for a very long time. There are other diseases that we have planned for, our nurses have planned for, my department, like measles, mumps, whooping cough. Um, COVID has provided us an opportunity to really understand our plans and go more into detail. Now, we did create a specific plan for COVID last year and we will continue to have that extension or uh of the plan. It is fluid um because things change. Um, again, we were working on it two weeks ago, two weeks ago, things looked a little different. An isolation plan, again, that is our health rooms. Um, however, with COVID, we know that we need more than one room. So we will have what we call an isolation room for students, or we call it something different. Each school calls it something different, quiet room, something that isn't so scary as an isolation room and a health room. Um, so we are not mixing up kids who may be in there because they've got a scratch or need a Band-Aid um or need some medication and students who are sick are in a separate room. With, um, we now have five nurses and health room assistants in all of our schools. So we have dedicated personnel who will be supporting those, that program. Health and safety strategies that Dr. Ricky Smith has talked about, we will go into more detail and accommodations for students with disabilities. Next slide. So to start, I am the Director of Student Services, so I oversee special education and five oh fours and ADA pieces. Um, we are actually in our last week of our summer program for students with disabilities. Um, students with disabilities did participate in the K eight enrichment program and other programs in the district. And also, we had specialized services for over ninety students um at Twolletin Middle School for the last six weeks. Um, we're very, it was a very successful six weeks. Um, we served lots of kids and some kids were able to do both programs. Um, that said, students with disabilities are one of the more vulnerable communities, populations in our schools. And it is vital that we have health and safety stra- pro- protocols in place so that students who cannot wear masks, students who cannot physically distance, still can come to school and be safe. Um, we do have students who are medically fragile, who uh physically can't take on and off a mask. And we wanna make sure that they can come to school and have access to their education, just like everybody else. So uh the rest of the population wearing masks, having plexiglass up, is really important to make sure that that student is safe. Um, we have students who have autism and sensory issues who are learning to wear masks. And I would say about ninety five percent of our students with disabilities are effectively wearing masks, which, um, you know, if you asked me a year and a half ago, I don't know if I thought that would be possible, but it is. Um, but there still are some students that that is a struggle. And so we make accommodations, either mask breaks or going into a um the learning center. So those are things that we are committed to because we wanna make sure students have access to education.
Question, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
Yeah.
Curious about the teachers working with those students, the sped teachers. Are they getting a special training about, uh, you know, like what does the, obviously, the mask requirements are more straightforward for classroom teacher than they are for a sped teacher. What sort of professional development or training is being offered to those individuals?
Well, and it's also the people who run the isolation rooms and the health. Yes, so there is a higher level of uh protective equipment and so sometimes it's a different kind of mask. Um, most of the time, our surgical masks are effective in those settings. Uh, well, so what they do learn, though, is like, we might do three feet in a classroom. In a classroom that has a student who can't wear a mask, it might be six feet um or or ten feet, but we also wanna make sure that student feels comfortable. So it's all very individualized. We also have a process in place because we have students that we may not know about who have med- medical conditions that uh make it not safe for them to wear a mask all day. So we have a process where the counselors and the nurses will um get hel- healthcare provider information and we will um assess what kind of accommodations that we can provide in those situations. The other thing that I thought would be of interest to you is the Office of Civil Rights just sent down guidance to the state and to the districts that we need to start thinking about long COVID as a potential disability. And that would apply to staff and students. Um, but we're, the research is showing that there are individuals who continue to have symptoms from COVID um over six months, three months, and they may be eligible for some of the plans that we provide for students with disabilities. A five oh four plan, even possibly an IEP. So we will be starting to work on what that looks like. We do have a category in under IDA called other health impairment, so that would qualify. So it is a qualifying condition, which kind of shows you, gives you a context of of the world that we live in right now. Next slide. Uh, these will all look very familiar to you. Uh, Dr. Ricky Smith, I love the the image of the Swiss cheese. Um, these are all the things that will protect students and protect us from um spreading the virus. I just a couple of quick comments, when we say physical distancing in cohorts, we are, um, we, we were in pretty small cohorts during hybrid. That is not what we're talking about this school year. A cohort, I would think of like a classroom. It is a stable group of people that we can contact trace. So we know if you're in ninth grade language arts um with Mr. Bernard, we can go into synergy and we can figure out who was in your class. Um, and we will have seating charts, so when we need to contact trace, we will know who was sitting next to him and um contact families and individuals if there was a COVID positive case. Uh, next slide.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, as Director Kinch just said, those are a lot of the things you saw, there are things that we had in place this last, this last year, this past year. So there's nothing really new on there. What we do know is that we got pretty good at what we do in our schools. Our administrators and teachers and staff did a really nice job of moving their plans, adjusting on the fly when need be. And so now what we're doing this year is really just looking at um reinforcing in those plans. There's been a lot of, every time we do something, we like to take a reflection back, you know, what went well? And what can we improve on? And so I think we're in that process now as we gear up for the next school year and trying to better our practice each time. And so on this slide, one of the things that's that is available, last year, we had diagnostic testing available in all of our schools, so it was the Vindex now. And um we are in the process of signing up all of our schools currently. Today, we have about half of our schools signed up to date. We're hoping to get them all signed up by the end of the week. Um, that's the expectation. So we will have testing available for students, staff, when they're in school and when they show signs or symptoms, they can come down to the health room and it and uh printal permission, things like that, that that will be available. Also, that's new this year and with more information to come, is for staff, there'll be at-home screening. So it'll be a process as staff can go online. I looked at it um today, it's a, it's a, just a quick form that you fill out. A test will be mailed to your home weekly and you can choose to test or choose not to. There's also will be an opportunity for cohort screening, something um Director Kinch mentioned. Like, you know, cohort, I think of, you know, we've probably had this conversation on athletics as well. So it could be a cohort, could be um a volleyball team and students that were unvaccinated, volleyball team might have an opportunity to do some, to do some voluntary testing on this. So uh more information will be coming out around those as some of this information is just coming forward for us and to the schools. Next slide, please. Just a real quick update on ventilation airflow. We've had a lot, been really busy this summer with finishing out a lot of our bond projects and ventilation airflow has been um one of the things we focused on. So currently, we have four elementary um schools going with a mechanical upgrade and that's Bridgeport Durham, Byron, Mary Woodward. So those are in process. Um, hope to have, we, we got some good news at the end of last week that all of our units will be in today. One unit showed up today. And so, um, sorry, Dr. Sue, maybe we haven't told you that yet. Um, so we are really excited. So we're waiting to find out where the rest of the units are, hoping to get all those um installed prior to school starting. We do have a backup plan to put um individual units in classrooms in case those um do not arrive. And so lots of planning is going on um on those four elementary school upgrades. We also have an upgrade going on at Tiger High School Auditorium. We have the district ionization project starting for all the buildings, starting on the eleventh. And we, it should end through um the month of September, depending on um the ti- the amount of time that it takes to get some of these products. For some, we're finding that there's been delay on a lot of the things around construction and a lot of our projects with getting our materials. And so, um, but that's the, that's the latest information we have, we hope to have that done by the end of September. Um, we also are increasing our filter changes, changes in our schools. Typically, we did them one to two times a year, we're shooting for three to four times a year. And so we will be trying to um increase that. Um, maintaining and repairing existing HVAC systems. Um, at any one, I was looking at our board this morning, we probably have about twenty five units right now that are either being worked on or something. So you get one up and one comes down, it's just this revolving with all of our schools. We have over two hundred and fifty units in our district. So getting, keeping those up and running, especially when the hot weather comes, it's, it's a challenge, right? They're working really hard and our, and our staff is working really hard to keep those up and running across the district. And then, um, as we're talking about all this, as we prepare potentially for a future bond, we are looking at, we've started the process to look at maybe, you know, all those things that we need to address that next bond. And that part of that would be our HVAC. And so looking at a district-wide plan of upgrading across all of our buildings along with other systems in the district. And so, um, that is, that is, that is, that begun about a month ago and we're, we're meeting every other week as we start going through that on a district-wide basis. Next slide, please.
And this goes to one of your questions and something Dr. Ricky Smith was talking about earlier, is we do have a public health team. It's one of the things we started last summer and it worked really well. Uh, we have representatives from different groups. Um, and we come together with the best information we can and discuss everybody's perspective and make recommendations. We are fortunate to have a superintendent that is a public health expert. So, whoo. Um, so what we do is take our best thinking and as you can see from this list, it is a pretty diverse group of people. Sharon Fox joined us last year. So if one, one of you would like to join us, we are happy to have you. And we've met every week to every other week. We would make recommendations. We were not a decision-making body. We'd make recommendations, they would go to cabinet and cabinet would discuss from there.
Next slide, please, Patty. So final thoughts. In the past seventeen months, we have faced extraordinarily challenging times together. No one has gone untouched by this pandemic. Not anyone in this room, not anyone in this community, not anyone in this country. And now we have this rule regulating K-12 masking. It's just one more in a long line of pivots that exhaust us, frustrate us and anger us. To date, we've been able to pivot because we've worked hard to build on the strengths of our district that helped us meet the needs of our students during a global pandemic. Because as exemplified by our two outstanding student board reps here, they are just two of twelve thousand four hundred students. They are our why. This is what we do. TTSD's educational professionals, including you as board members, have pulled off some heroic efforts in the past seventeen months to provide care, connection and continuity of learning for our students. Family and caregivers are also essential partners. And we are ready once again to work with each family in support of their student, should they decide to return to in-person instruction on September eighth. Care and connection means making sure every student and every person that enters our school buildings experiences a sense of being known by name, by need, so that they can access equitable, high-quality education. I've heard a great deal over the last several weeks from parents pleading with me for no masks and just as many pleading for masks. My commitment has been and continues to be to listen and respond to all the different viewpoints in a manner that also complies with federal, state, local law and guidance, balances and provides for the needs, not the wants of all, to the best of my ability. That will never change as long as I'm your superintendent. In partnership with our community throughout this pandemic, I, along with many of you, cabinet and district staff have had the opportunity to work with our community on hard issues. Issues such as how do we return to hybrid instruction? We did that in November of last year. How do we balance and how do we develop an annual but district budget? What do we do with the student success dollars that meets the needs of all of our students, all of them? How do we return school resource officers into the schools in a way that is, is affirming? And we are so fortunate to have our resource officers as community partners with us now at every board meeting. And it is, it is such a great joy to have them here. And then the eventual return to hybrid instruction last spring. That's just a few of some of the really heavy lifting that we've had to do. But we got it right, not because we shied away from the hard conversations, but because we refused to buy into yelling, use of threats or tearing each other down as part of that process, which would keep us from the solution. In over forty years of experience, first as a trauma, critical care and public health nurse, and now as an educator, yelling, threatening and demeaning language and behavior never improved the ability to understand the concern and work towards a solution. I finished my report this evening by sharing that my work as a superintendent is informed by one additional lens, that of a mother of three and a grandmother of two. Outside of my faith, my life with my amazing spouse, who's over in that corner of forty-three years, who rarely misses a board meeting, bless him, there is nothing more important to me than the health and well-being of my children, my grandchildren, and every child in this district I have the privilege to serve. With that, I will take any additional questions or comments from the board.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sue. Bernard, sincerely, that was a very thorough and I think well-done presentation. So board members, I'll turn to you. Any questions for the panel?
I want to reiterate the, the statement that that was extremely comprehensive and informative. I learned a lot, so thank you for sharing such valuable and important information. Dr. Sue, you are a public health expert, as has been said, and an experienced leader with a strong track record of success as a leader. In your opinion, and based on the research studies, I think you talked about two of them, could you share, give some insight into what, what would it look like if we were to return to school? Five days, all children, no masks.
That would be a glorious day. To be honest with you again, it is, and I appreciate your asking my opinion. You, whatever, whatever I bring in front of this board is anchored in, in a variety of verifiable data. And I have always, and I apologize, just a quick bird walk for just a moment because I appreciate when our community reaches out and says, have you read this article? Have you read that article? And I always very quickly look to see where the source is from. You know, is it a, is it a study that is peer-reviewed? And Dr. Lauren, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Does it have a substantial N number? How many participants? You know, what were the controls of the study? So that I'm able to dig more deeply and I'm grateful for that opportunity. You know, both in terms of my, my healthcare training as well as my doctoral training, about how you really pull that apart and know what's really, you know, solid research and what, what's suspicious. So to get us to a no mask, the gold standard again would be vaccination. So much like we have conquered measles for the most part, when, when populations are vaccinated, we've conquered polio. We've conquered, you know, chickenpox for the most part, mumps, measles, rubella, roseola, the whole, the whole gamut, because vaccination is a gold standard. That I think is going to be the foundation for getting back, back to that, that point. I think the other piece is relative to our legislature having a substantive conversation and there are many healthcare physicians, as well as other healthcare providers that also serve in the legislature, thinking about COVID vaccination as part of the suite of vaccinations that we require for students. Because we want to put this in the rearview mirror. The fact of the matter is until we, the, the virus runs out of individuals in which it can morph and change, that will continue. And so that also involves our global partners as well. But that would be the, for me, that would be number one. And there may still always be. And there's been a great deal of, of comment in, in the literature from Journal of American Medical Association, New England Journal of Medicine and others, talking about the fact that we had, didn't see the flu outbreak last year. Why? Because people were masked up. Not because they were vaccinated, it's solely on the, on the basis of masking and social distancing. So there may be, I think there's some real thought and discussion going on within the scientific community about, do we follow more of the European and global model, which is when, you know, the flu season's upon us, we mask up for a period of time and, or not. I mean, I think that's, that's part of it. But for me, it would be, it would be solid vaccination rates of vaccination across the spectrum. I will tell you that I'm deeply disturbed by the number of pediatric cases now, the number of hospitalizations. And just one hospital alone in Louisiana had over the weekend sixty-two admissions to the emergency room, of which half of those went to ICU beds and half of those children ended up on ventilators. If you've never sat at the bedside of someone being ventilated or cared for someone being ventilated, it is not something you ever want to see and you certainly would never want to see your child there.
I just wanted to say thank you as well, and I appreciate all the advocacy that you're doing. And, you know, on behalf of the district and our kiddos, especially when you're having these conversations with the governor and kind of that flexibility for as things change, you know, how can we be flexible and change things at our district level? And this is more of a curriculum learning question. But what is the process for teachers and school administrators looking like for the kind of teaching and training time? Kind of bringing these kiddos back in and learning their names and their needs and kind of the different landscape that it will be this year? What, what does that look like?
In fact, I'm going to turn this to Director Kench for just a minute. She's going to talk about how we're going to set and address the mental health needs. Because again, we know that every child has been impacted, whether they came in through hybrid last year or whether they remained online. And you could certainly see it in terms of our summers, our summer programming, how excited kids were to be with each other, but what the needs were and they had to learn how to do school all over again. So I'm going to pass the mic here just briefly to Director Kench and then I can answer whatever she, she has not yet answered for you.
So like I mentioned earlier, we've been doing this for years. Teachers set up their, the school community, their norms. This year's special because students have not been in school for a long time, some of them. And because there are some protocols and routines that they need to follow that aren't part of our everyday two years ago routine. So every year when students come back to school, they have PBIS lessons. So lessons that, David is shaking his head, we, expectation rotations. So we, one of the things we know is that oftentimes we assume people, including kids, all of us, we assume what they come in with. And so we try to take that assumption out and say, here's what it looks like when you come to school. When you create a predictable environment, people feel safer. They feel they're able to learn. This is all about learning. End goal is always learning. So we have expectation rotations at elementary and different types, similar type, but cooler lessons at middle school and high school. At the same time, there will be intentional relationship-building activities and community-building activities. In the last couple of years, we've been engaging in restorative circles where students spend, this is middle school particularly and a little bit of high school, where they spend time building community and being part of a community in circle. So instead of thinking of it as the teacher relationship with students, it's all of our relationship with each other. We're part of a community. When people feel safe and have strong relationships, they're able to learn. The research is very clear. So there will be a lot of intentional work around that. At elementary, there's PAX, PAX's program that provides our teachers with some guides around how to set up your classroom community, how to teach emotional regulation. We all need brain breaks. We all need to take a deep breath every once in a while, so that when we go back into the classroom and enter into a math lesson, we are prepared. So there is a lot of work going on right now behind the scenes, preparing our school psychologists and our counselors and our SEL coaches and our administrators to support our teachers and setting up their classrooms to get started in learning. And it's, I want to make one more point. It's not that you do all this and then you start learning, you do them at the same time. And it's about holding students to high expectations and creating an environment where they can access rigorous instruction. And that starts right away. It's not, you do this and then you do this. Do it at the same time and you continue it.
Director Hines?
Yeah, then if you.
Thank you. Did we answer the question for you? Yeah, perfect. And I appreciate Director Kench's statement about we do it in conjunction. Our number one goal, our number one reason for success is academic instruction. And so, but, but we know that students, you know, cannot learn if they don't feel safe or they don't feel that their needs are being addressed, whatever those are. And so I always, as a fifth grade classroom teacher, would say about the first six weeks, you're getting kids into harness. This is how we, this is our classroom routines, this is how we do things. And we do our children a disservice when we, we lower the bar. That is, this is not about lowering the bar. This is an ambitious goal and we can meet this goal. But we have to because our kids deserve it and they depend on us to deliver it. And that's what, that's how we're going to proceed. And so to say that somehow this is watered down is, it could not be further from the truth. And we're bringing reports throughout the year that demonstrate that rigor. Director Hines?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys are doing. And being inside of a school myself, I know that our students are resilient and that they go in to, you know, learn and have fun. And they are there and they still, you know, go in there and love their teachers. And, you know, they're still there and have fun with their peers. And, you know, they, they have their masks on and, you know, they're, like I said, just the resiliency of it all is what surprised me the most. I thought we were going to have a lot of problems with the students wanting their masks off. And that was further, that could be further from the case. They were there having fun, they were there learning, they had their masks on. And frankly, I don't think the teachers had to remind them as much as some of the adults in here that we've had to remind a lot. So I really think that we're not going to have any problems with the students. And I think it's more of a, an adult problem than anything else.
Thank you, sir. Director Sersi?
I appreciate Director Kitch, which you were talking about earlier, about the ninety-five percent compliance that you were seeing among special ed students with the masking. As a parent of an autistic child, I have been so impressed. My daughter has worn her mask every day, even inside her own house. She will wear her mask sometimes because she just gets so used to it. It's part of what you wear. You put on your shoes and socks, you put on your mask, you don't go to, you don't go to school wearing a tank top, right? A spaghetti top. So I, I really appreciate that. I do want to say of all of the things that you've talked about this evening about masking and the leverage that the state has over us that they could withhold funding, the leverage they have over us that they could fine us, leverage that they have over us that we could be sued personally, that, you know, district officials could be sued personally as well as collectively. The thing that is most compelling to me is that if our kids are masked and there is an outbreak, which there will be, those kids who are masked and practicing social distancing do not have to be quarantined, which means those kids can stay in the classroom, stay in the educational setting, get the education, which is why they're in the classroom to begin with. And so I really want to reiterate, that is the most important reason, is keep the kids in the most stable educational system that they can be. And if you can't wear your mask, then take the online option and wait until we're at a point where we no longer have to make that requirement.
And again, we stand ready to work with our families and to help them sift and sort for them because we know that this is hard. This, again, I'm, I go back to my last comments. We know this is hard. We know that people are angry, we know that they're frustrated, so am I. I would like nothing better than, than to have us back to where we were pre-pandemic, but we're not done yet. And so this is part of the hard work that we have to do as adults and the hard work that we have many times as adults in helping our children understand how to keep themselves safe and productive and, and successful. And so we, we really do want to sit one-on-one and that's what our principals are geared up to do, our counselors are geared up to do. So really reach out if you're sitting on the fence between, do I come in, do I stay out? We, we've got staff that are ready to work with you and help you think that through. Because again, what's most important is that our children are receiving rigorous instruction.
Throughout the course of, of this, especially last year, there was a lot of conversation about how schools would have to respond to the needs of underserved populations, of students who had particular circumstances like the ones you described. And you talked about the special education population. Could you say a little bit more about how other underserved populations, bilingual students, others would also be served? You know, because as, as we know, the gaps were already there, but they widened, right? Under, under COVID. And so I understand that there's some very specific things that are in place to address those, those needs and concerns.
Relative to the English language learning model, we are developing instructional coaches and a push-in versus a pull-out, so that it is integrated into the regular classroom day. And I think that will basically not only identify, differentiate the needs of English language learners specifically, but also give them a real classroom, in-classroom time to practice those skills across content. So that, that's a major shift. And Associate Director Tim Blackburn will provide an additional report relative to that. As we look at our underserved populations, the reason we set the target at eight percent is because we know that students who are highly impacted require, based on John Hattie's research, at least a year and a half of growth to stay at, at proficiency. And so to that fact, that's why I paid very close attention, who came in during, during summer school? Because we know that our communities of color specifically were hanging back based, and from hybrid, basically because of a fear of COVID. As we did outreach in terms of vaccination for family members and addressed that issue, over half of every classroom that I walked through, both in the morning and the afternoons, were racially diverse, have, in each, in every single one of those classrooms. So there was very clearly a sense of, greater sense of safety. Have in each, in every single one of those classrooms. So there was very clearly a sense of, greater sense of safety that their child, their children were in good hands and that they could engage. And when I look at the online academy enrollment, it is, it is not the same number as we saw stay online from, from last spring. So I know we're making inroads relative to the importance of coming in, of getting vaccinated and following the procedures. And then certainly the basic needs teams that we developed this year will continue and will be deepened and working hand in glove with teachers and with principals and knowing every student and putting those students that still have, you know, significant gaps. We'll start to differentiate those by tier. We're a multi-tiered system of support district, which means, you know, 67 to 70% of your kiddos should be receiving an instruction, you know, in the mainstream classroom with differentiation. But for those that continue to, gaps persist and we have now the eye-ready math and reading assessments of K-8. And we have other assessments that we use at the high school level. Then we will get after that in, in tier two. And then if they have to go to tier three and have additional interventions. In talking with Assistant Principal Tyler Devola here from Tiger High School, he said of the 71 students who came in, 61 credits were, were recovered or were earned. That is phenomenal. And those kids didn't miss a day because they had built those relationships and they knew people cared. And so teachers were offering them rigorous instruction, really addressing their needs emotionally, but basically holding the high bar. And that's phenomenal. So we'll bring you a, a report to you relative to credits recovered and data from our summer school, because this will be the first of four summer schools in a row that we will run to continue to expand the amount of seat time available to students to learn and to continually close those gaps.
I just wanted to say that myself and most of my peers are incredibly understanding of the reinstatement of the mask rule. We know it's what we have to do to keep our peers safe. But I was just wondering if there was any consideration into looking at keeping the high school and removing the mask rule in the high school because.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you again, and it's, it's based on how the variant behaves. That's where it's anchored in the science. That, that was the consideration was you, the more vaccinated the population, the more flexibility we could provide. Unfortunately, Delta is a weak player and the, the vaccinated are just as much of a target. Although, as I said earlier, the fortunate piece about that is that you get wicked sick, but not to the point that you, that it requires hospitalization. And certainly we have not seen mortalities that we've seen. Thank you.
All right. That was a lot of information. Thank you all again very much. If the board will indulge, I think we only have three public comments. So I'd like to get through public comments. So folks don't have to wait if they're here for that. And then we'll take recess after that. Okay.
We're going to need just a moment to.
Okay. I will read the sort of preamble for how public comment is going to work while you are working on that. Thank you again. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the first of two times that public comment shows up on tonight's agenda. This public comment is for anything related directly to an agenda item. So it could be the presentation we just heard, or it could be one of the three action items we have tonight. Any public comment related to those items, now is the moment when you will be called on to speak to that. All other public comments or, which won't happen tonight, but if they're overflow comments that don't make it into our 30-minute time limit for this public comment, will be moved to the end of the agenda's public comment, which is item eight on the agenda. So that's the process. I wanted to start kind of where Dr. Sue left off and acknowledge that temperatures are very high in our community right now. Those of you who read the Tiger 12 Times saw that the mayor of King City just had his garage door graffiti over a local issue. Our, our colleagues in Sherwood had to call the police department for a disruption at their school board meeting. And this is happening across the state. It's happening across the country. And it's really sad. And particularly in a school board meeting where our focus should be on the children. And that's what I appreciated so much about your presentation, what's best for kids. And I know that everyone in this room and everyone in this district cares deeply about kids, whether it's their own kids or all kids in this community. So I just encourage us to center those thoughts and that intention as we're speaking tonight. And with that, here's the sort of nuts and bolts. I'm going to read this section verbatim, just so we're all clear. This section of public comment is for items directly related to this board meeting agenda. Public comments regarding board agenda items will be shared with the board during this public comment portion of the meeting. Public comments are limited to three minutes and should be brief and concise as per board policy. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations or programs, but, and this is important, the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. In fact, if a specific person's name is mentioned, I will galve you down and the public comment will end. It's not permissible by board policy. I mentioned that this is a 30-minute section, but with the, the list we have now, that won't be a problem. Okay. So when you arrive up to the table, you may remove your mask when you are speaking. After you speak, we ask you to put the mask back on so you can return to your seat. Please share your zip code before you start your public comments. So we are aware whether or not you are a constituent of ours or whether you're not. Other districts require people to read their full address out loud. We're just asking for your zip code. If you would like your public comment to be included in today's meeting minutes as part of the public record, our board secretary is located at the end of this table, Patty. She can accept your comments either in writing or via email. And those will be included in the official meeting minutes if you would like. Finally, please know that this is an opportunity for the board to listen to the community. This isn't an opportunity for dialogue. So unfortunately, the board will not be responding to comments, but we will be listening. That is our role in public comment period. Additional comments can always be submitted to the board via email. We have received, you know, I've only been on for two years. Jill's been on for longer than that, but literally hundreds, if not thousands, over the last year and a half, we receive emails, phone calls, et cetera. We want to hear from the community. And there's a lot of different avenues. If folks aren't comfortable speaking in a public meeting setting, that they can speak to the board. So I've asked Director Zershme at the end of the table here to be our timekeeper. She's going to be keeping time on her phone. So it's standardized for all people. She's also got three cards that will show you how much time you have remaining. So you'll start with three. She'll give you the one-minute warning. And then when you see the red stop sign, please stop your comments. You are permitted to finish your sentence, a few words, but at three minutes, you'll hear the alarm, your time will be up, and we will move on to the next person. So that is the process. Board members, any questions about what was just said or additions? Okay. So I will call board, public comments up one by one. I know we had one person remove themselves. So the first public comment speaker is Gabriella Miller. Gabriella, you may come to the front. And Jill will just start the time once you start speaking. So feel free to get situated.
My zip code is 97223. And I am here tonight to implore, implore you to allow children and teachers to minimize their requirements for masks to the greatest extent possible in the coming school year, regardless of their vaccination status. I believe a day will come when we realize the immense damage we've done by forcing our children to wear masks, trapping bacteria and CO2 to their face for hours on end. To be clear, I do believe that in the science that masks may reduce the spread to an extent, but I also believe that masks are causing illness in our children when worn for hours on end. And they are limiting their social and emotional interaction at school. My own son complained frequently of headaches and the inability to breathe and had an ongoing cough when wearing a mask daily in the spring. He's going into second grade this year, and I also have a four-year-old who will be entering the, the district soon. My seven-year-old has changed quite a bit in the past year, as have many children. He started out kindergarten year a very happy child that loved school. And he's gradually become a child that does not love school anymore. And it's hard for me to look at his kindergarten picture on my desk at work every day and not think about everything that he's endured, as well as all the other children. The goalposts that we've looked forward to time and again, to get back to a normal life in the past year have continually been moving. And at this point, it's hard to even say what the goalpost is. If what I'm hearing is correct, that, that goalpost is now to have all children vaccinated, I will tell you right now that my children will be withdrawn from the district. And I think that you can expect a lot of other children to do the same. We know now that the risk, there's risk in everything that we do and there's risk in everything that we don't do. Thus, there is risk in wearing masks and risks in not wearing them. The former is not being acknowledged. Right now, the media has us on alert about the Delta variant. We know that young children are generally very resilient to this virus. They don't contract it easily and incidents of severe illness are incredibly rare. It's reported that the Delta variant is highly contagious, but is also far less virulent. We know that we should teach our children to be brave and resilient, compassionate and rational. Right now, I believe we're missing the mark on all of these things. We are stunting their resilience by dragging them through a never-ending pandemic. We are shaming them into wearing masks for hours on end under the pretext that they should do so to protect others. At this point, there's a very small subset of the population that we're seeing, remains highly susceptible to this virus. These individuals would face similar risks than the seasonal flu. Past year has felt much like a nightmare where we are constantly running away from a boogeyman. In the beginning, we knew nothing about this monster, but now that is not the case. We have tools that we know that we can use against the virus.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. That's time. For anything you weren't able to get through in your comment, you can give it to Patty and she'll include it in the meeting minutes for the rest of the board and the community to be able to see. So thank you again. The next public comment is from Sarah Joy Brown. Is Sarah Joy here? Okay. Then the final public comment for this portion will be from Jordan Gates. Is Jordan here?
Okay. Hey, my name's Jordan Gate. My zip is 97224 here in the district. And I'm going to echo some of the comments I heard just recently from the last person that spoke. And one of the things that is becoming apparent to me is that there, on both sides of this issue, there, there's good points. For example, if you hear about, on one side, you, you seem to be focusing on the deaths. There are so many deaths going on with the die. On the other side, let's just say if we were just talking about lockdowns, there's losses in business and people's livelihoods. There's, there's suicide rates gone way up, overdoses from drugs has gone way up. And so there's tremendous issues on both sides. One death, of course, is tragic, but stopping all deaths cannot be our goal. Otherwise, we wouldn't drive or fly or go out of our houses because we could die. And the risk for COVID for young children is so very low that I'm surprised there's so much hesitancy to let our kids be kids. Again, a previous speaker talked about the goalpost being changing. Initially, we heard in the beginning that the goal was to keep our hospitals from overflowing, that, so that people wouldn't be, you know, we, we run out of respirators and people would die. But then as soon as the hospitals weren't overflowing, then they talked about, you know, the deaths. And then you didn't hear anything about the deaths. Pretty soon it became, oh, the cases. How many people have caught COVID? And the deaths right now, or at least a few days ago, are 12 to 14 times less than they were at the height back in, in the winter. And yet you don't hear about that. And I just, I don't know why exactly the, the media doesn't talk about the risks on both sides. Or the, the tech giants are actually censoring or banning people from talking about the risks of, for example, the vaccine. And it does have risks. And some people have issues as far as taking it and medical, good reasons for not taking it. Yet if you talk about that for some reason, your comment gets banned. And so I just wanted to point out that if we could just look at the, both sides of the, of this issue, I think that, and, and we're fair, we'd have a much better way of getting along and understanding each other. That's my point.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay. So with that, it is 8:12. We still have three action items as well as a second section of public comments. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give us an eight-minute recess. It's 8:12. So at 8:20, let's come back. But please get something to drink, take a break. Please keep your masks on while you're in the building. But we have a courtyard to our left and out front to our right if you need a break. And we will see everyone back at 8:20. Testing, testing. All right. We are going to reconvene this meeting. If folks are going to remain in the room, please have a seat and adhere to the mask requirement. I'm going to make this announcement once. I spoke to some of our staff who've had to remind several patrons six, seven, eight times to wear their masks. If folks aren't following the mask requirement, you will be trespassed from TTSD, which comes with a one calendar year prohibition from entering district buildings. So, I want to be very clear, that's our district policy. And this isn't something we have the ability to be flexible about, it's our policy. So, I'm going to go ahead and wait to start the meeting until folks are in compliance with our mask policy. Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to begin, first, I will gavel the meeting back to order at 8:20. And we will begin with action items, starting with Art Ruckin Playground Equipment with our presenter, Director David Moore.
Good evening, Chair Bowman and members of the board. This evening, we're presenting a request to award a contract for our playground equipment for Art Ruckin Elementary School. Good evening, Chair Bowman and members of the board. Good evening. Good evening, Chair Bowman and members of the board. This evening, we're asking the board to consider a contract award with Game Time for playground equipment at Art Ruckin Elementary School. This is accessing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Game Time through U.S. Communities Contract. And we have accessed this contract for similar equipment at Templeton Elementary and our Calipuya Early Learning Center. And the amount of the quote is $182,720. So, we're asking the board to consider award of the contract not to exceed this amount. Be happy to address any questions also.
All right. Any questions for Director Moore? Director Zerschmid?
So, I was disappointed to see there's no picture of the playground equipment because I'm a visual person. But based on the description, is this sort of the standard, what a playground at elementary schools looks like, I assume?
Yeah, at the preschool level or early learning level.
Does it have some of the swings, the adapted equipment that some of the elementary schools have been bringing in, like for swings for kiddos that have to use or would prefer to use different kinds of equipment?
I can't answer that this evening, but we can get that addressed for the board after the fact.
All right. Is there a motion?
I will move to award a contract to Game Time for the Art Ruckin Playground Equipment for an amount not to exceed $182,720.
Motion's been made by Director Irvin and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will vote by acclamation. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right. It has been approved. Thank you, Director Moore. And we will stick with you to move on to our next action item, which is Foundation Pack with Pride Contract Presentation.
This evening, we're asking the board to consider a resolution for a direct contract award without competition to the foundation to operate the Pack with Pride program in the upcoming year. And as you all know, this Pack with Pride program began right after the start of the pandemic and our school shut down. And we had families missing out on the meals served during the day through the school lunch program. And of course, this is a truly, a true volunteer effort, both labor and management. And although it's worked well and served district students and families over the past 16 to 17 months, it's not something sustainable on a volunteer level. And we were fortunate enough this year to receive our federal funding through the ESAR funds. And one of the allowed uses of those dollars is to feed students. And with the dollars that we received, both in the second version and a third version, we're reflecting in this resolution to access either one or both of those. The one thing with federal dollars is when you do an award, a contract award without competition, under both federal, state, and local laws, it requires approval from the pass-through agency or the federal government. So, the pass-through agency in Oregon is the Oregon Department of Education. So, through guidance from the district's attorney, we wrote up a request for the Department of Education to consider use of the ESAR dollars for this contract. As you can see from the resolution, those are indicated as exhibits to the resolution, both a request and approval. Written approval has been provided by the Department of Education as part of the resolution to kind of outline the justification for this direct award without competition, primarily the fact that the foundation successfully, in partnership with the district, operated this program over the last 16 to 17 months. And it's a model that provides for individually created boxes for families, known families in the district. And it makes sense to continue that model, but not on an ongoing basis as a volunteer-based management and labor system, but adding a contractual relationship to the partnership between the district and the foundation. I'll pause and address any questions.
Questions in the board? I have one technical, I just want to make sure I understand. So, we're voting tonight on an exemption, which I think very clear evidence for why the exemption would apply here. Will we approve the full contract once that is negotiated between the foundation and district?
Yeah, we can do that. If, depending on, you'll see, seems like that's cutting out again. Depending on different areas of the contract, there's some blanks that will be part of the negotiations with the foundation. And we can always bring that back. I know we want to, we kind of set a target date of September 1 as being the start of the contract. So, we would only have one more opportunity with the board. And I know we want to get going right away on completing the negotiations with the foundation after this evening. That's the other part of the action item, to approve the superintendent and designated to complete the negotiations.
Roger, got it. W, did you have a question, Director Hannes?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that Pack with Pride is a very important organization within our district that has served a lot of our marginalized communities. And I think that this is a very important thing for TTSD to join and welcome them as a partner and extend this contract, just because, you know, as having volunteered for a couple of weeks with them, I know how much they go through and all the, you know, all of the work that they do for our families. So, I think that this should be a no-brainer. And obviously, you know, Director Irvin here is well-versed in Pack with Pride, so she might have more to say about that.
I don't have anything more to say except that what an incredible program it is. And Director Bowman was kind of one of the very founders of that program. And so, it is a no-brainer to kind of continue to support our community and our families in this way and also move it, because it is a huge undertaking. It is five, six, 700 boxes a week that we were doing all of last year for our community. And so, to kind of bring that more to a community-school level and doing it this way and really having it as, it's like there's butterflies in the microphone, to kind of bring it under the guidance of the schools and those basic needs teams, I think is a really great way to direct that and do that if that's the direction that it ends up going. And so, I absolutely am in favor of that resolution.
Yeah. This is, I mean, it really is a cause for celebration to have this potentially be a permanent part of the district. So, thank you for your work. And I know other cabinet members have been involved in this negotiation as well. So, with that, if there's no other questions.
I move to adopt Resolution 212205 as submitted to grant a special exception that authorizes the superintendent that does need to negotiate and execute an agreement with the foundation for Tiger 12 schools to operate Pack with Pride food pantry services during 2021-22 with honor.
There a second? Lots of seconds. I'll let Patty decide who got there first. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? All right. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Moore. So, the final action item before we move into our second public comment opportunity is pulled from the consent agenda, that is, board working agreements and board assignments. Board working agreements remain unchanged as they were presented in the packet. However, Director Zerschmid pointed out that board committee has a very specific definition in policy. We have standing committees and advisory committees. And we have classified some committees as board committees when they really were district committees. So, instead of quibbling with the labels, we've just included board member and then all of your assignments. So, it should be one-stop shopping for you to know what your committee and other assignments, for example, negotiations or authorization to negotiate property transactions, for example. So, it's all on one sheet of paper. I think the only thing I wanted to ask is, does this coincide with your recollection of your assignments from our board retreat? Or is there anything we forgot or misplaced? All right. If not, I think we're ready for a motion.
I just have one question. Because for years and years, we did not vote on our board assignments. And my concern is that if we vote on our board assignments, does that mean that if we change our assignments mid-year, we'd have to vote again? Or do we not? Is this protocol?
Good question. There is a caveat at the top that basically says, you know, standing committees and advisory committees may be created throughout the year. My understanding is that it's optional for a board to adopt both working agreements and committee assignments. So, I don't think we technically have to adopt these, but I'll defer to the board if we want to go that route. Okay. Well, then, I'll accept a motion if someone has it.
I'll offer a motion to adopt the board working agreements and the board assignments for 2122, as modified.
One second.
Motion has been made by Director Lynn and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. We will do a vote by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? All right. They have both been approved. Thank you, directors, for an excellent board retreat. I'm excited to continue working. And just a reminder, the things that were on the retreat agenda will be picked up at the next board meeting's work session prior to the meeting. Okay. All right. So, with that, we are going to move to the final item. But before we do that, Director, or excuse me, Dr. Ricky Smith, I believe, do I hand to you for?
So, Cabinet, at this point, you are dismissed from this evening, and we wish you a good evening. And Director Rose, I appreciate your continuing to attend as our community relations students. You are welcome also to be excused at this point if you so choose. And we thank you for being with us this evening. So, if you give us a few moments just for the cabinet to dismiss, and then we will
All right. I will let Cabinet gather their things, and I will pull up the public comment rules, very similar to what was discussed before. Very similar to what was discussed before. All right, so this is the both overflow section of the public comment or public comment not related to a specific board agenda item. And the rules are going to be exactly the same as before. I will read them for your reminder. First, when you arrive at the, at the table for public comment, you may remove your mask to speak. Please put your mask back on after you finish your remarks or turn to your seat. When you start your comments, please share your zip code. Again, we want to know whether someone is a constituent or not prior to their comments. Director Zerschmid again will be timing on her cellphone. You'll hear the timer go off and she will also be showing you the color-coded cards. So you're aware of how much time you have remaining in your presentation. Again, it's a very hard cap at three minutes, though you may finish your sentence. And again, Patty will collect public comments in writing or via email if you would like it included in meeting minutes. The board will again not be engaging in a dialogue. This is an opportunity for us to sit and listen, not respond. And as always, board member emails are open for additional comments that you have that you didn't feel comfortable sharing tonight. Or of course, anyone following along on the live stream at home, you may always send us an email to share your thoughts. Okay. Any questions from the board member? Board members, while I pull up our. Okay. So with that, we will pull up our, or we will invite our first of three public commenters in this section. The first is Nancy Jones. Is Nancy in the building? Okay. Next public comment is from Helen Heller. Okay. Feel free to get situated and Jill will start once you begin speaking. Make sure it's red. Red is on, obviously.
Hello. My name is Helen Heller. My zip code is 97223. I have a daughter in high school. I know that in the beginning, you guys said that the CRT is not being taught here. But I can see in the curriculum and also the footprint in the, in the website is that the CRT, it's taught through the lens of CRT. So I'm going to call, I'm going to talk about CRT. This past year, I've been paying attention to what's going on in our schools. I did research on CRT. CRT is rooted in cultural Marxism and then it should not be allowed in our schools. It teaches students to loathe white people because of how they are born. It teaches our kids to be social, to be social justice warriors and to hate America and its history. If you care about skin color, that means you are racist. I look at you and you and you as individual uniquely made in the image of God as a human being. Skin color is a distraction. We should teach our children to not judge people by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I learned that from Martin Luther King Jr. You are stumped on Dr. King's legacy if you think that, if you think CRT is good for our children. You are teaching our kids to destroy something that works really well. There is the Western civilization that the people in the communist and socialist country would love to have. We value individual where you have the freedom to make your own choice to succeed. The schools should teach our children more about how to exercise their moral courage, how to build bridges, how to defeat injustice, not people, how to empower and to mitigate anger with compassion and kindness, valuing the individual, their work ethics, goodness of one's deeds, essence of character, and goodness of one's heart. I came to the United States when I was a teenager from a country that was ruled by a dictator for over 30 years. My family went through a lot during his regime. America offered me the same opportunities as those who were born and raised here. And for that, I am very grateful. I want my children and grandchildren to have the equal, I repeat, the equal opportunities that are had and be successful, not because of their skin color, but because of their work ethics and their characters, just like what Martin Luther King Jr. wants us to do. There should be only one race in America, and that is the human race. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. It's not, there we go. We have a public comment protocol and we're going to adhere to the public comment protocol. It's not fair to make exceptions for anybody. But next board meeting, you would have that opportunity or you can send via email. Thank you. The final public commenter will be Jordan Gates. Jordan.
Okay. We may begin. I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, again, the last speaker. And I must have been out of the loop for quite some time. I'm kind of shocked by some of this that I'm seeing here today. I remember, so you know, I'm a conservative, I'm a Republican. And I can remember when Barack Obama became our president. And even though I didn't vote for him, I was quite proud that he was our first black American president. And I actually thought at that time, you know what? This racist thing is finally behind us. It's near the end. Not that there's no racism, there's racism, but it's diminished. But for some reason, I don't know the reason why, for the last 12 years or so, it's gotten worse and worse and worse and worse. And now the issue of race and racism is almost approaching backwards in time, 50 years to the 60s. We saw a couple of people here, I don't want to mention names, I guess, but that said that the CRT is not being taught here in the K through 12 system, also that it's only studied in law school. And I've heard these talking points before, but I'm, again, reiterating in the last speaker, I have to say that looking at the curriculum, I see critical whiteness. I see that colorblindness, individualism, and meteorocracy are things to be avoided, that the children should learn how to not do these. And I just saw yesterday happened, you know, we had Avenda, Avenda, Avetta King, who I don't know if is Martin Luther King's daughter or granddaughter. But this is what she said. She said, "Am I surprised you to know I support critical race theory? Or to be more exact, I believe it's critical to understand, maybe more so, that at any other point in our shared history of the United States, that there's only one race, the human race. There is no white race, no black race, no red race, no brown race, no yellow race, no mixed race. There is only one critical human race." That's not a theory, that's a fact. I'm not trying to gloss over the current controversy about what our nation's children should be taught about race or racism. I just want to share from the outset that race is a social construct, that I refused to afford any more power. And I, to see these concepts taught in the school here, frankly, is shocking. And it's got to be stopped. And I might have the definition wrong, but it looks to me that critical race theory is being taught in this school system and it needs to be stopped immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Jordan. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:46 PM.